Dennis Jordan has prepared a presentation for unfunded liabilities that was requested.
Good evening, Mayor. Mayor Protam, council members. Unfunded liability, I think I've probably talked about this numerous times over the last several years. We have been looking at this in various aspects and making certain changes to try to manage that. There should be a handout right next year. All of you should have it. You got one right there? Okay, okay. But one of the interesting things about this topic, it's rather timely, because as far as our EVIP for our state share, there are three pieces of that. One is our dashboard with our financials. The other is collaboration and cooperation with other municipalities trying to save money. And the third piece of that has always been compensation and benefits. Well, this year, the governor has changed that third piece to how, to require cities and municipalities to put together a plan to deal with unfunded liability. So this obviously is an issue not only with Saginaw, but it's throughout the state, throughout the country. So I just kind of want to give you a heads up on that. So I will be submitting a plan on unfunded liability. The deadline is June 1st, so I'll have it in prior to that. Make sure I get this right. One of the things I wanted to look at when I'm looking at our unfunded liability, and I think that people have to look at our fund balance in our general fund. I think it's really important. Most of our unfunded liability, or a good portion of it, is directed right at the, on the general fund. It impacts the general fund. And I kind of look at this as a financial health of the city. And it's always nice on a personal basis, you know, you've got your inflow of money and outflow of money going out, but it's always nice to have a little savings account. Well, this year, 2014, the annual budget that was submitted, our budget is, our balance is at $268,000. Obviously, not a whole lot of cushion. So anything can impact that. That's basically where we go when we can't afford to pay the bills. But I think it's really important that the public sees that, that they understand that our fund balance is right down to a very minimal amount. And I think the auditor, when he come in, he talked about that. We have enough for about two hours' worth of operation if we had to get down there. So taking a look at the fund balance, now let's take a look at what our unfunded liabilities are. Basically, they fall into three, two different areas, but I broke it out into three because we do have two pension systems. The OPEB, which is probably 99% retiree healthcare liability, that's at $220 million. OPEB. Other personnel employee benefits, that's what that stands for. I'm sorry. It's just kind of a name I kind of throw out. Everybody calls it OPEB. If you look at the audits, you'll see those numbers there, too. In fact, a lot of this information, it's right on, it's right on our website. It's on the audits. It's in the budget. All this information is really readily available to the public. But we actually have about $3.6 million set aside for the pension, or for the retiree healthcare. It's about 1.6%. Very, very underfunded. Our police and fire pension is about 62% funded, and we're at about $69 million underfunded in that account. And the MERS pension is about $76 million unfunded. That represents about 40% of the funding. So you can kind of look at those percentages. So each one of those are well underfunded. And our total unfunded liability is $365 million. Nine hundred, nine hundred and thirty-four, nine, 365 million, 934,700. So that's a huge, huge, huge number. But the thing is with unfunded liability, a lot of people look at that and they say, well, okay, it's a number, whatever. But the key to that is, what do we have to pay every year for that? How much do we have to contribute to that every year? And that's what really gets scary. If you take a look at the annual required contribution, both pension systems, actuaries doing an analysis every year, and they come in and they'll tell us how much we are required to pay, to pay onto this pension system. Now, both the police and fire and the MERS pension systems were closed in 2000. No new people are in it. But we do have current employees that are working their way through the system, and then we actually have our retirees out there taking a benefit. But we're required to make these payments every year to fund into that pension system. In 2009, we paid about 4.4 million. And that's what our annual contribution for the police and fire. This year, it's a little over $6 million. So it has increased about $1.5 million. And that continues to grow. And that has grown about 7.1%. I'm going to kind of get back to that growth in just a second. If you take a look at the MERS pension system, in 2009, we paid about $5 million into it, our annual required contribution. And in 2013, this year, it was a little over $9 million. And it's continuing to grow. Now, what's included in that, both of those pensions, the MERS, that annual required contribution, what's included in that number is two things. One is the normal cost. That's your benefit cost. That goes, that's the checks going out to the retirees. So part of that $9 million is what they call normal cost. The other part of that $9 million is to help start paying off some of that unfunded liability. So that, you've got two pieces of that every year. It's like a mortgage. One of it's the interest, the minimum payment, and the other piece of it is actually pays on the principal. So that, you've got to keep that in mind. That's how that works. Yes, Mr. Martin?
Dennis, before you go too far, does that also apply to the police and fire pension?
Yes, it does.
So, so under police and fire, part of this is for the benefits, part of this is to pay off?
Pay off the unfunded portion.
Okay.
Now, when I get into the next, I'll get into the, before I get into the next slide, I just want to also explain, I kind of look at it like a mortgage. These payments are like mortgage payments. And normally, when these plans are open, in other words, new hires come in, they're into the plan, they usually amortize them over a 30-year period of time. And when they closed these plans, what happens, MERS in particular, what they do is, their philosophy is, well, you've closed a plan. That's great. You're not going to, by closing a plan, you're not putting more and more liability into it. But what we're going to do is, we're going to make sure that that plan is 100% funded when the last person goes out. And so what they do is they start shrinking that amortization schedule. And for the MERS pension, we're down to about eight years, I think, and then it gets to five years, and then it stays stable, because I'm going to show you something in the next slide. But, so what happened? That has shrunk. So what you've done is you've taken this huge mortgage, and the bank is requiring you to pay it off sooner. So your payments are going to go up. Same thing with the police and fire pension, although it's a little different because their amortization schedule has not shrunk at that same rate that the MERS. It's a different formula that they use. So with that said, I'll go to the next slide and give you an idea. I showed you what we did do up through 2013. These are projected payments that we're going to have to make to each of these benefits, or each of these systems, over the next five years. For the police and fire, it's going to grow, and I used a 7.1 index because they actually don't peak out. It's a different amortization schedule. They don't actually peak out until about 2030. Their pension, their payment in 2030 is a little over $12 million. So it just goes up really slow, but it's going to have the same effect. It's going to start peaking out. So the police and fire pension is going from 6.4 million in '14 to about little, around 8.5. That's what our required payment's going to be 2018. That's only five years down the road. The MERS, it's a little different. Remember I said that the amortization schedule will shrink? Well, with the MERS, it's actually going to reach that peak when it gets down to five years, and then it stays. They'll amortize everything out over five years. It's going to do that between 2016 and 2017. Our pension payment goes from a little over nine, what it is today, $9 million. In 2016, it'll be 12.5. That's, that's three and a half years. I don't know how we're going to come up with the difference between $9 million we're paying right now and the 12.5. That's a huge, huge increase. After that, it starts to decrease, and it, I didn't carry it all the way out for the next 20 years, but it, it starts decreasing. Eventually, it's going to get down to where the, in fact, the year 2030, another 15 years, it's going to be about $1 million. So it's going to shrink right down. But we've got to get through the next three or four years with the MERS. So you're looking at those required, annual required contributions. Where we're going with the projection, you know, it's scary. It is. And when we're looking at a fund balance, our savings at 286 million, or $286,000. 286? Oh, okay. 268. Yeah, it's a little scary. I don't know where we're going to pull that money from. So unless we get a big kick in, in our state share, or property values skyrocket, or we get a lot more employers in town to get that income tax revenue, I'm not sure how we're going to make that. I'm not trying to scare anybody. I'm just trying to tell you. That's what the problem is with the unfunded liability. Possible pension solutions. As I said, we've closed both plans, and that's really a good thing to do because it stops that bleeding. But unfortunately, that liability's still out there. We've already done that. One of the things we could do, and it requires negotiations with collective bargaining agreements, is we could actually freeze the current benefit, the current people that are in it. We could freeze their benefit right now, today, and move everybody into a defined contribution plan or a possible, or possibly a hybrid type of a plan, something with a lower multiplier. We could negotiate changes. I think the governor had a formula. I don't think he did. And the compensation he had, the governor had a reduced multiplier and a reduction in overtime and PTO and vacation time added into that. Those are things that, you know, we can, we have actually already talked, we've actually talked to the unions about both of those already. And we're not successful in getting down that road. One of the things that we can look at, and that we are looking at, and we have been doing a study, is actually moving the police and fire pension system to MERS. And you say, why would we do that? MERS has about, I don't want to throw these numbers out, but it's like eight or nine billion dollars in assets that their money that they're managing, the police and fire pension has about $113 million. So they've got a lot bigger dollars that they can invest. And we shared with the council about a year ago, I think it was in January a year ago, actually had MERS come in and we kind of took a look at that. And I think over the last 10 years, if we would have had the police and fire money in with MERS, it actually would have made about $40 million. Forty million, more than what they made, 40 million. That's about $4 million a year that that would have generated. And it isn't because these folks aren't doing their best, the board, and the mayor's on the board, and city manager, and there's two fire, there's a firefighter and a, and a police officer and then a civilian on that board. But they have to make those decisions, how to invest that money, dealing with money managers. And it's not something they do every day. And they don't have the volume of money to invest, a larger amount of money. So because of that, they're able to better leverage the dollars that they have, get better returns. What we found out is that $40 million difference over a 10-year, 10-year period of time, if we were to move our money over to MERS right now, we had them do an amortization study, what would our annual required contribution be? It was almost $2 million to the police and fire pension system a year alone, reduction in our annual required contribution. But we have to negotiate that with the unions as part of their working conditions. So we're working with the unions right now on that. Police, both police union contracts are both open, or will be expired in June, so we're in negotiations. And that's one of the topics right there. So that's huge. Yes?
You answered part of the question that I had in terms, what are the barriers preventing the merger, the merger with MERS? And you said you were in negotiations?
Right.
From last year. So are, do you see that progressing rapidly? Because it's very clear that we're losing potential revenue from being a part of that system. So are there any other barriers that are preventing the movement of that?
It's getting, basically, it's getting them to agree to it. And, you know, without, you know, I, there are some support, and when I show them, and I've showed them the numbers, and I've got the report. In fact, we did a presentation to the police and fire pension board, and some of you have numbers, and I can show you the difference in what our annual required contribution is. But yeah, I've done that. I've also had that presentation to both unions. I've already given them the information so they know, I say both police union. And the fire union has it as well. But they know it's a huge reduction in our annual required contribution. It'll save the city over the next 25 years about $56 million, just moving it and having somebody else do it. They get the same benefits, not a reduction in benefits, no change in benefits. So it's a matter of convincing the unions to move.
Thank you for that. So do we have sort of milestones in terms of saying, okay, by May 30th, we want to come back and hopefully get it? Is there, are there deadlines set in, in hopes of getting some answers in terms of, are we committing to this? Or are we just kind of letting it stay open?
I'm committed to it. It's a matter of getting an agreement. It's going to be part of the negotiation package. And obviously, there are a lot of pieces to that, you know, in turn for letting us move it and bringing solvency to that plan and saving the city, you know, a couple million dollars a year. You know, some of them are going to want something in exchange. So we're working on it. It's all part of the negotiations. I have meetings with the union this week, and then, one of them this weekend, and one of them in three weeks. So I've met with them a couple times. I think, you know, we're getting close. My goal would actually be to at least get the police moved, because we can move a unit to a time over there. So at least get the police moved if they would agree to it by the beginning of the next fiscal year, or before.
Okay, that's what I was looking for.
Okay, that's my goal right there. Now, the fire, the contract's not open, and, but that doesn't mean I can't ask them. And I've already suggested it, but we haven't set it down on the table to open it. If we can get it through the police, then we can move to the fire.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I have a question, Mr. Jordan. I'd like to discuss all of this. And one of the things that I really want to get a clear understanding on is that we're going to save money. If we're going to save money, what is the reluctance with the, with the police department? If it's not, if they're going to have the same benefits and nothing is changing, then what is the problem?
I, I don't, I, that's.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I don't mean to be so blunt. I mean, I just need to know because I hear you saying that it's a win-win-win for everybody. But if it's a win-win-win, then we need to do something different, 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 so that they get on board, so that we all can make this transition, a smooth transition. So.
Mr. Mayor, I don't know. I'm not your labor attorney, but I suspect that if this is a subject of negotiation, you probably don't want to, I don't know, I'll defer to Dennis, but I just want to throw that out. This is a contract issue. We cannot discuss. Probably don't want to discuss that openly.
I just want to let you know that those are on the table, and we're working with them. But to get into the dynamics, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's part of the negotiation process. And I, you know, my goal is to be someplace by July 1st, have a tentative agreement, a signed contract, and hopefully that's part of it. You want to keep going?
Just a word, when we talk about savings, that, that, that means that's less that we owe.
The liability is still going to be there, but what's going to happen is, there's, there's assumptions built in to this whole thing. And what will actually happen is, we'll actually, we will pay less money.
Okay.
Because we're paying it off.
Okay.
It's, you're just going to pay, you're going to pay less money. I mean, you're paying less money over the same period of time. So you're going to end up paying that liability off. It's going to, it's going to change the liability, is what it does. Because they re-amortize it. If you look at their schedule, it's not going to be the same as what we have right now.
I'm concerned if, if we don't go to a plan, we don't build our tax base, then eventually, I would assume that the city files bankruptcy. And if the city filed bankruptcy, then nobody gets any money because there's no money to be had. If we file bankruptcy, that means we don't have the money. Am I right or wrong?
You're absolutely correct. And that's why I point out that the general fund, the fund balance, there's not a whole lot of money. Where are we going to get this new money from? So.
I mean, it seems to me that's what's happening all down the I-75 corridor. Detroit, Flint, Pontiac, end up going into bankruptcy, and all of a sudden, the retirees are losing. They're talking about maybe 35% in Detroit of their pension funds because they don't have the money, the tax base that we used to have. So it seems to me like it would be better for them to go to something so they can make sure they have some money instead of don't do nothing and say, I'm going to hold on to everything I got, and end up getting nothing. You know, so I hope that maybe we can get this word out to the public and to the retirees to, you know, maybe we need to do something. I mean, the people that work at Nextdoor Corporation, they had pensions. And all of a sudden, they don't have a pension. You know, now they got their own 401K program they've got to put their own money into. So I think we're going to have to take a look at this and kind of explain it to the retirees a little bit better to let them know what's going on. You know, either you do something and try to keep everything, or do nothing and get nothing. So.
And this is, this particular piece would only, you know, I can only work with the current employee, active collective bargaining agreements. But the healthcare, which I'm going to get to, you'll see that part, too, and you're absolutely correct, Councilman. You're absolutely correct. All right. The next thing we want to kind of take a look at is the healthcare. That's that retiree healthcare. But before we get there, I want to kind of tell you, when we started to look at these programs, when I started to look at them in 2009, the active, what we wanted to do, there are basically three areas that are drawn on those benefits. The active, future employees who become retirees, and then the active retirees. Well, I've checked off one and the first two because we've made great strides with the unions in working with the first two areas right there. Some changes for the active in 2009, and a lot of you have heard this, they didn't have any deductibles, any co-pays, minimum, they had a $20 office visit and a $10, $40 drug card, I think, a $20 drug card. But they didn't have any other co-pays, and they didn't contribute to the plan at all. That year, we negotiated with all the unions. All the contracts had been expired for four or five years at that time. And we got all of them settled. And all the employees were paying $250 deductibles, $1,000 out-of-pocket, and $20 per, or $20 per pay contributions. So we got them to pay a contribution. A lot more cost sharing is what I'm saying there. The other thing that we did hadn't been done is they performed a dependent audit, and we took about 100 dependents off our active employees' plan because they hadn't been doing audits. So that saved us ongoing about $250,000 a year. New hires, anybody hired after 2009, we took them right out of the retiree healthcare. They're not eligible for retiree healthcare. We did set up a healthcare savings plan, and we contributed $125 a month for them. Whatever they have when they walk out, that's what they get. But that had an impact on that liability calculation. More changes in 2010, we began doing open enrollment for all employees and retirees. Gave us another chance for them to fill out the form and return it, and let us know if any of their dependent status changed, if they were married, weren't married. And we make sure we took people off that weren't supposed to be on the plan. It was our way of annually auditing our plan to make sure we don't have people on that shouldn't be. We also increased co-pays, deductibles again, added a three-tiered drug plan, and higher payroll contributions. The other thing we did is we created a new part-time contract, negotiated a new part-time contract. And the contract that we have, we have about eight people in this part-time contract that they've had around for years. Basically, that contract has a lot of benefits, including healthcare for that, for that employee. But we created a new contract where we hire new people in, and they basically have their wage, a little bit of time off, and, and that's it. No other benefits. So it's a very cost-effective plan for those people. And then they get in the system and they have an opportunity to apply for other jobs once they get into the city, other full-time positions. But that was very helpful. Because having part-time people, sometimes you don't need a full-time. We just need part-time. And we have about 28 part-time people right now off that contract. Retiree healthcare. This is an interesting slide because what you see on the right side is, is our actual contributions for retirees alone. 2009, we paid about 7.8. Last year, about $8.2 million into that. What's interesting, if you look over to the left side, you're looking at annual required contributions. Well, with healthcare, unlike the pension, we're not required to make any payments toward the unfunded portion. So we haven't. We're on a pay-as-you-go. We basically pay the claims and administrative costs as we go. We haven't paid anything. Because in order to start paying down that unfunded liability, in 2013, we should have paid $16 million for retiree healthcare instead of eight. But we never have paid into it. We do have a balance of $3.6 million right now in the healthcare fund, but that's a far cry from the $220 million. So I thought that was important to understand that, you know, that we don't pay anything more, and the government doesn't require us. In fact, it's only been the last four or five years that the government started to require employers to start putting this information on the financial sheets, on the audits. What have we done so far for the, with the retirees, this retiree healthcare? As most of you know, last July, we moved all the retirees into the same plan that the active employees have. But they appealed that with, with the, through the legal process. And the judge filed an injunction and stopped us, so we put them back into their current plans. They did create a retiree association. We are in litigation, which means we're kind of in a discovery stage right now, providing all kinds of information. They're requesting, we're requesting information. We're in that discovery stage of the litigation right now. And simultaneously, I have been, I have had a couple discussions with the union, or with the retirees. They have an association. The slide before said there are 726 retirees. That association is probably a little under 300 that have, that have formed. And I have talked to their board about a possible compromise. Maybe we, maybe not move them into the same plan, but another plan that could save us, you know, money. Now, the first plan was going to save us $3 to $4 million, and we just recently made, gave them an option, an alternative plan that was probably a little bit closer to $2 million a year. So that's in their, the ball's in their court right now. We're willing to work with them. And so that's kind of where we are with the retirees. One of the things I added into your slide, because I'm almost done here, is I did leave, just so you could tell the difference between PPL4 plan, which our current employees have, you have it there, and a PPL3. I'm not going to go through it. I'm just going to give it there for your information. So you can kind of take a look at what the cost sharing is between the two plans. The PP4 is our current employees. The alternate plan that we offered the retirees was a PPL3. So you can see that's the plan that we offered. Now, our current employees also have a payroll contribution per pay. They also put additional cost sharing. The retirees, we weren't going to ask for that. We're just asking for them to move to this other plan. So that's kind of for you to look at, digest, think about, and that is the elephant in the room, that unfunded liability. And if we don't do anything about that elephant, we're going to end up in a train crash. Because the ship is sinking, and don't shoot me. I'm just the messenger. Sorry, that's.
And it appears in the news on a regular basis where the city of Flint now is ready to move out from under the emergency manager, financial manager. They're getting ready to transcend back. And I believe it's simply to a point where. And I believe it's simply to a point where there's nothing they can do with employee retirement and employee healthcare. That's gonna be defined by the courts on what can happen with that. And of course, Detroit, everybody's watching because of the bankruptcy that has been filed there, and how that will run. So you can cut your services to the public to, only to a certain point, but eventually, something's gotta be done with the unfunded liability, because it, what part, how much of our general fund does that now take up? Is that the biggest portion of our general fund now is unfunded liability?
About a third.
About a third right now? Of general fund?
Yep.
Is unfunded liability? So wish you luck on negotiating with our, with our, all our unions. I will say, as a result of your report, we see some very positive things happening with our unions. They've made some great concessions over the years, and I just hope we can keep that kind of momentum going, so we can do that. Council members, any other questions?